Testing, one, two, three. Testing, one, two, three.
Thank you, Council. Thank you. Council's reminded to press their flashing red light buttons as I call your name. Mayor Protam Snyder.
Here.
Should like, thank you.
Got it.
Councilman Moreno.
Here.
Councilman Benson.
Here.
Councilwoman Carson. Councilwoman Teeter.
Here.
Councilman Johnson.
Here.
Councilman Mackel Downey.
Here.
Councilman Bullock.
Here.
Mayor Protam, you have a quorum.
I'd just like to let the rest of the council know that Councilwoman Carson called me and asked me to ask for an excused absence for her as she is having some work to do this evening, so.
And I apologize when I forgot to include Mayor in the talk.
Yes, he will be off for the next three weeks, so I will be your entertainer for the next three weeks.
Our host?
Yes, your host. Will the audience please rise for a moment of silence and join us in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. At this time, the city staff will pass around a microphone and we invite you to introduce yourselves, please.
Pam Splatler.
Betty Thomas.
Danny Thomas.
Oliver Lewis.
Jeanette Lewis.
Ellen Haug.
Jennifer Scobella.
Nina McNeil.
Rosa Carmona.
Javier Carmona.
Lorena Carmona.
Reba Droder.
Robert Romarn.
Yermos Erna.
Larry Quintana.
Jean Luffel.
Carolyn Keith, Parks and Recreation.
Jenna Johnson, Parks and Recreation.
Diana Swanson.
Maryam Dali.
Abas Kaba.
Moba Dali.
Catherine Della.
Jeff O'Neil from Congressman Perlmutter's office.
Hannah Mullin from Congressman Perlmutter's office.
Liz Towner.
Ed Casinos with Search All International. We're on your agenda tonight.
Richard Teves.
Jim Saderson.
Paul Workman, City Planner.
Chris Kramer, Planning Division.
John Howard, Information Technology.
Michelle Halsted, Communications.
Ms. Ryan Cordero, Government Relations.
Phil Baca, Chief of Police.
Thank you very much. And it looks like there were some last-minute people that came in the door. Is there anybody else that wanted to sign up on this sheet? If they are, did you want to... There are some. Okay. Laura, would you mind... Sorry, taking that back just for... Allow the rest of the people that wanted to sign. I appreciate that. Thank you. Sorry. Okay, the first thing that we have tonight is something that we love to do, and that is recognize some wonderful achievers in our school district. The Metropolitan Mayor's and Commissioners Youth Award, now known as the Adams County Mayor and Commissioners Youth Awards, is an award that recognizes teenagers between the ages of 13 and 19 who have overcome personal adversity and created positive change in their lives. The award program provides business, community, and civic leaders an opportunity to actively demonstrate their belief in support for the young people in our communities. How it works is that teens in our community are nominated by parents, teachers, coaches, and others. Their nominations are all submitted with other city nominees in the representing county, which Commerce City participates in the Adams County selection process. The 20 highest-scoring names in Adams County are recognized at the County Recognition Dinner. All nominees from the individual cities are recognized at their local city council meeting. Tonight, we are here to recognize our Commerce City nominees. This year, we had two individuals nominated, both of whom we will recognize in just a few minutes here. So if the council would like to join me down at the pulpit, we can go ahead and get this going. Would someone from city staff like to come and join me for this? Carolyn?
Tonight, we are here to recognize our Commerce City nominees, of which we have two this year. The first young man that I would like to recognize, Malba Dali. Malba, if you'd like to join us up here. Malba is 17 and is a junior at Venture Prep. Although life has dealt him tough cards to work with, Malba has come out on top. Despite the overwhelming situations of his past, Malba is an amazing young man who has helped his 11-person-led Bavarian refugee family adjust to and succeed with life in America. He is currently working, holding a 3.75 GPA at school, and is college-bound after graduation. It is no wonder he is a great role model for his younger siblings and others around him. Again, Malba Dali. Next, I'd like to honor and recognize Rosa Carmona. Rosa is 14 and an eighth grader at Adams City Middle School. Despite family hardships, Rosa is a determined young lady who doesn't quit in the face of adversity. She is a member of the National Junior Honor Society, a part of her school's Get Real Coalition campaign, avid student, holds a 3.47 GPA, and was accepted into the University of Colorado's Pre-Collegiate Development Program. On top of all that, she cares for the needs of others and is always willing to help out. It is obvious why her nominator states that Rosa makes Adams City Middle School a better place with her presence and her hard work. Again, Rosa Carmona.
Carolyn, get up there.
Just wanted to say real quick that I think it's so important that we continue this important program. I was shuffling through some really old documents the other day and actually came across my certificate that I got when I was nominated for the Metropolitan Mayor's and Commissioners Youth Award when then-Mayor Dave Busby was mayor back then. So I'm really excited to see that this is a tradition that we've continued, and it's so important to recognize the youth in our community. So again, congratulations to the nominees and continue to do your good work in the community. Thank you.
Councilman Benson?
Yes, does anyone know when the Adams County presentation's going to be made and when the whole metropolitan area presentation is going to be?
I believe Carolyn has that information.
I apologize in that I forgot one of the most important statements on this paper. Both Malba and Rosa have moved on to the county level and will be recognized at the Adams County banquet on Friday, April 15th, and it's my understanding that those invitations should be coming out shortly.
Thank you so much.
Is there going to be... There'll be a whole metro-wide presentation?
There will not be.
There will not be.
That portion of this recognition has been eliminated, so it's... Now it's done at the county level.
All right. Good, okay.
So again, congratulations to both Malba and Rosa for advancing to the county.
And do you know where that's going to be on the 15th?
It's usually at the Riverdale Golf Course. Is that correct? Yes.
That's correct. That's where it will be again.
That's where it usually is. Okay, thank you.
I would just like to take a minute to say congratulations to both of you. It's just really wonderful that you're working so hard and that you're doing so well, and it's really a credit to both of you and your families, so congratulations once again. Thank you. Okay, we have two public comment rosters remain available to the table at the entrance of the council chambers for those of you who wish to address council. One roster is for non-agenda items and the second is for action items. The first name I have on the agenda or the signup sheet is Reba Droder. Good evening, Ms. Droder. You pressed the button. Thank you.
Good evening. I need a little clarification. I don't know if I speak now or later at the end of the evening when you talk about the Rocky Mountain Arsenal.
City Attorney Gayler, could you give us some assistance on that, please? Ms. Droder is wondering if now's the time she should speak or if she needs to wait until the discussion about the Rocky Mountain Arsenal.
If that item is on the agenda, which it is...
It is.
You should wait.
Okay, then we'll hear it then.
And anybody else that may have signed up for that same item should wait...
Okay.
Until that item comes up.
Okay, thank you. Guillermo, were you wanting to speak on that or something else?
Uh, yes.
On that? Okay, thank you. And how about Glenn Murray? Good evening, Mr. Murray.
Good evening. Glenn Murray, 11010 Havana Street. Request a little bit of assistance from the city this evening. I'm the only farmer within your city. And what is taking place is zoning... The zoning and development that's taking place has created a lot of areas that are ignored. I basically call them waste areas. And as a result of that, two things happen. A lot of them grow weeds, which creates an issue. But the one I want to talk to you about tonight is the prey dogs. I don't know if you've looked around and seen what's going on around in your city, but I'm here to tell you, you have got thousands and thousands of prey dogs. Now, they're a rodent. They do lots of economic damage. They carry the plague, and it's something that needs to be addressed. I've lived here my entire life. My family's been where we're at almost 100 years. I have never, never seen the kind of populations of prey dogs we have. And it's because of those areas that are basically waste areas. The problem for me is, unfortunately, as they multiply, the little ones have to find a new home. Well, almost every field I've got has got prey dogs in it, and I have been doing my best to control them, but I need some help. And this is going to have to come from this city because I am telling you, take a look around. Don't drive around with your eyes closed. You have got thousands of those little critters out there. And they are going to create issues. They have created issues. When they get the plague, you're going to have some real issues. They're going to make the news. So I would strongly encourage you, some way, adopt an ordinance, do something here to control those things because they are completely out of control and they are a rodent.
Thank you, sir. City Manager Flannery, can you check into that and get back to Mr. Murray on that? I do have a couple of people on the board, too, even though we usually don't respond to citizen communication. Councilwoman Teeter?
I agree. They're coming all across... Can I do this, Mr.?
Well, last week, I was somewhat remiss and was criticized for it, and we have to be careful. Citizens communication. If you want to reread the directions on the mayor's script regarding citizens communication, we really need to stick to that.
Right, and I'm going to focus this towards you. I do agree with Mr. Murray. Like former council member who's here now, Mr. Lewis said if they were called prairie rats, they wouldn't be as abundant as they are. They're backing up to Eagle Creek, I've noticed. They're along Highway 2 and on the perimeters of the arsenal. And I would like to have some kind of a study session or presentation discussing this some evening.
The city manager's been directed to look into it, and I'll leave it to the city manager to then decide how he's going to report back to the council. If it's going to be by memo or if it's going to be a study session, but he can decide that and then let you know.
We do need to probably talk to Tri-County Health as well. That's probably one part of the discussion that we need to have.
Thank you. And then Councilmember Benson?
What forms of control are available? I guess that's something that Tri-County Health can help us out with. I mean, I know they have various ways.
I think the professionals that do this type of control would be the Fish and Wildlife as well as the Tri-County Health. And I think most of our situations locally with the city parks, we do have some of those problems, but I think they're mostly, as Mr. Murray mentioned, in the wasteland areas that are pretty much non-used. So that's something that we would want to raise to the different agencies and come back with a comprehensive report on it.
You know, another effect might be that it's going to raise the number of predators, like coyotes and airborne predators also. If there's a lot for them to eat, they're going to expand, too. So, all right, thanks.
Thank you. Moving on to the consent agenda, there are two items on the consent agenda this evening. Council is reminded that these items can be removed from the consent agenda for discussion purposes at the request of a council member. Does anyone wish to remove any item from the consent agenda? Councilman Moreno?
Just prepared to make a motion.
Oh, okay. Anyone, either Councilwoman Teeter or Councilman Bullock, want to remove? Just for the motion? Okay. All righty then. Councilman Moreno?
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Councilwoman Teeter?
Second the motion.
Thank you, it's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Will the city attorney please read the titles?
Title of ordinance 1850 reads, "An Ordinance Amending Section 12-8001 Entitled Fraud By Check of the Revised Municipal Code of the City of Commerce City." Title of ordinance 1855 reads, "An Ordinance Amending Sections 23-4 and 23-5 of Chapter 23 of the Revised Municipal Code of the City of Commerce City, Colorado, Relative to General Agency Assignments and Specific Hazard Assignments Set Forth in the Emergency Operations Plan for the City of Commerce City, Colorado." And that's the consent agenda.
Thank you, sir. May I have a roll call vote, please? The motion passes seven to zero. Next, we have a public hearing. There is one public hearing on tonight's agenda, it is Z-895-11. I'd like to start by opening the public hearing. Will City Manager Jerry Flannery please invite the staff up to review the case?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Pro Tem members of council, Mr. Paul Workman from Community Development is presenting this item.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, ma'am. Good evening, Ms. Mayor, Pro Tem, and members of city council. The case before you this evening is mentioned is case Z-895-11. Subject property is located at 6120 East 58th Avenue. The applicant is Surtal International, and their request this evening is to rezone the property from the current I-1 designation to a PUD designation, which stands for Planned Unit Development. Subject property is located in the Rocky Mountain Industrial Park, 58th Avenue is located just to the north of the subject site. It's currently zoned I-1 and is surrounded by other properties that are zoned I-1. Subject property is generally identified in the red box on this graphic. The comprehensive plan for the city calls this area out for industrial/distribution types uses, which is generally consistent with the I-1 zone district. This is an aerial of the subject property, again, 58th Avenue, located just to the north. It's currently a one-story office building with warehouse facility behind that. There is some relevant case history to this site, specifically A-406-79. It's a two-part request, the first part was a variance for outdoor storage at this site, which was approved. The second was, there was a company called Rexnard. At the time, they were a resin product manufacturer, that use was not specifically called out in the zoning ordinance at that time. Standing operating procedure in 1979 would have been to take it to the Board of Adjustment and let the board determine the appropriateness of the use relative to the zone district. At that time, the board determined that that use was an appropriate use in the I-1 zone district. It's staff's understanding that's a pretty harsh chemical process, and since that time, the site has been attractive to business with different chemicals and things of that nature, just given the occupancy and the location and classification, all that sort of stuff. The applicant specifically is an infection control and cleaning product manufacturer. They essentially do manufacturing of products for medical, dental, and industrial businesses. They purchased this property in 2003, they've been there ever since. They're currently a successful business and a growing business within Commerce City. So, what brings us here this evening is they need, because they've been so successful, they need some additional warehouse space. As was shown in the aerial, there is an existing warehouse. They have some existing tanks for some hydrochloric acid and for some alcohol, things of that nature. They would like to move that out of the warehouse facility to have more room for inventory in order to ship. They also anticipate, as they continue to grow and continue to be successful, that they'll need some additional capacity for the storage tanks for those items for hydrochloric acid and alcohol storage. In the current land development code, that, all that use and the outdoor storage of those materials requires an I-3 designation with a conditional use permit. So, in trying to work through some alternatives with the applicant and try and retain a successful business here in the Commerce City, there was two alternatives that were discussed. The first would be to pursue a rezoning to the needed I-3 with a conditional use permit. That option would allow for all three uses that are allowed in the I-3 zone district at the subject property, which created some concerns for spot zoning, which would indicate that you would pick one property within this I-1 area, rezone it to I-3, and allow for all of those heavier uses. It also would be in contradiction to the city's comprehensive plan. The second alternative that was discussed was the Planned Unit Development, or PUD, which allows the applicant and working with the city to customize the zoning for this specific site. That alternative would allow for essentially I-1 uses plus the uses that the applicant specifically needs, which would then limit the allowable I-3 uses at the property. It would generally maintain the zoning integrity of the area by allowing mostly I-1 uses, would generally be compatible with the I-1 uses, and would also narrow the scope of potential businesses in the future that may be attracted to this site. After discussing those alternatives with the applicant, they chose to rezone from the I-1 to the PUD. The PUD does essentially allow for I-1 uses plus the applicant's use, which maintains that zoning integrity. In analyzing the application, there was sort of a three-pronged approach. The first was analyzing the site's history. Based on the case history, the site has historically been used for chemicals, again, staff's understanding that the previous user was more intense than the current user, that the site has always been attractive, again, given the occupancy and the location, that sort of stuff, to businesses with some chemicals, and that, you know, it is a reality that Surtal has been at this site since 2003. The second prong to the review was to look at some of the advantages of the potential PUD. It does allow for the I-1 uses, which is consistent with the area in general, plus the Surtal use, which would allow us to keep the business. It also maintains the zoning integrity of the area by generally allowing for the I-1 uses. It's not considered a spot zoning because the majority of the uses are consistent with the I-1 zone district, and does allow the city to narrow the scope of the allowable uses that may be used at this site. The third prong of analysis was to refer it out to some outside agencies and some agencies with some expertise in this area. The first is Tri-County Health and then the South Adams County Fire District, and then the City's own Office of Emergency Management. The application was reviewed by these agencies, and the comments that were received by staff is that there's no additional risk to, you know, health, safety, welfare sorts of issues as opposed to what's currently at the site today. So with that information, the Planning Commission has decided to recommend approval to city council, subject to two conditions for this application. The first is that the applicant is required to maintain accurate records with the city's Office of Emergency Management, and they need to contact that office if there is ever an emergency. And two, the applicant would be required to stay current with any and all permits from any regulating bodies moving forward. That would conclude staff's presentation this evening, but as always, certainly we're available to answer any questions you all may have.
Councilman Benson?
This may just be some typos, but I know that about half of the documents refer to 6120th, 6120 East 60th, and the other half prefer to 6120 East 58th.
I'll answer that.
Is that two different things?
No, the correct address is East 58th Avenue, and in some of the internal documents, the reference was made the 60th Avenue, but the correct address is East 58th Avenue, but the important thing is all notices, public notices contain the correct address, East 58th Avenue.
Okay.
Thank you. Councilwoman Teeter?
Yes, I have a couple. Since this area is surrounded light industrial I-1, and the applicant has chosen to change to PUD, can you explain to me again if his uses will be limited then? If he wants to become more aggressive, have, you know, the more aggressive uses with the industrial three level?
That's a very good question, very relevant. The answer to that is, right, each zone district allows for a certain set of uses as a use by right, and then some other uses that require special approval from either city council or from the Board of Adjustment. One of the hesitations of rezoning to the I-3 would be that it would then allow for all of those other heavier, more intense industrial uses as a use by right without additional review from other bodies in order to ensure compatibility with the surrounding area. The benefit of the PUD, staff felt, was that the PUD allows those uses to be customized. So essentially, the way the PUD is written is that you're getting all of the uses by right in the I-1 zone district that you would have if it maintained the I-1 zone district, plus there's the addition of a few uses that Surtal needs in order to operate as a use by right at this location.
So by going this direction, it's actually a layer of protection then?
Yes, well, yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Somewhat, because of more control with the, from the city. Also, in the history, has there ever been any hazmat spills at this business?
There was no indication from any of the outside agencies that there was anything of that nature at this site.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilman, okay, you don't have a question?
I just wanted to make a comment that I actually asked the exact same questions, Councilwoman Teeter, during Planning Commission.
Okay, great. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to testify on this matter? None? Okay. Anyone else on council have any comments or questions? All right. I will now close the public hearing and entertain a motion to approve the findings and recommendations of the Planning Commission. Councilman McAldowney?
Madam Mayor, Pro Tem would move to accept the findings of the Planning Commission for ordinance Z-895-11.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Johnson?
Second the motion.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the findings and recommendations of the Planning Commission. If there's no further discussion, may I have a voice vote, please? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, thank you, the vote, the motion passes. I will now entertain a motion to approve Z-895-11. Councilwoman Bullock?
Move to approve Z, ordinance Z-895-11. Council is seated.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Moreno?
Second the motion.
It has been moved and seconded to approve Z-895-11. If there's no further discussion on the matter, will the city attorney please read the title?
Title reads, "An Ordinance Approving the PUD Zone Document Attached Here To Is Exhibit A and Made A Part Hereof, Which Rezones the Property Described Therein, Which Is Located At 6120 East 58th Avenue, Commerce City, Colorado, From I-1 to PUD Zone District, And Amending the Zoning Map of the City of Commerce City Relative, or To Reflect Said Rezoning."
Thank you, sir. May I have a roll call vote, please? Ordinance is approved, seven to zero. Thank you. Ordinance on first reading, ordinance 1856, there are two ordinances on first reading. First is the ordinance 1856, an ordinance amending the 2011, I'm sorry, 2011 budget of the City of Commerce City, Colorado, by recognition of the Colorado Department of Transportation Grant in the amount of $6,000. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address council on this ordinance? Seeing none, is there any discussion by council? Councilwoman Teeter?
Yes, move approval of ordinance 1856.
Thank you. Councilman Bullock?
Second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance 1856. If there isn't any further discussion, Mr. Benson, do you have a question?
Yes, I noticed that the summary states that the expenditure required is $6,000. Is that, I mean, we're getting this money, we're not spending it. I guess we're going to spend it, but we're recognizing the receipt of $6,000, right?
That is correct. The budget is really a twofold document. One is, it recognizes expenditures, but it also recognizes revenues. So if income comes into the budget that's not provided for, we need an ordinance that acknowledges the receipt of that revenue into the budget. So that's what this ordinance is about also. And then it appropriates the money out for expenditure.
Right. I just, that just kind of threw me though, it said that there was an expenditure required, but, okay.
Is that all, Mr. Benson?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Councilman McAldowney?
No, I was prepared to make the motion.
Okay, I believe we have a motion, and it's been seconded. To approve ordinance 1856, will the city attorney please read the title?
Title of the ordinance reads, "An Ordinance Amending the 2011 Budget of the City of Commerce City, Colorado, by the recognition of the Colorado Department of Transportation Grant in the amount of $6,000 for the police seatbelt enforcement of the Clickit or Ticket Program and authorization of the expenditure thereof."
Thank you, sir. May I have a roll call vote, please? Ordinance passes seven to zero. Thank you. The next ordinance is 1857, an ordinance amending the 2011 budget of the City of Commerce City, Colorado, by recognition of the Governor's Energy Office Special Event Grant in the amount of $500. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address council on this ordinance? Seeing none, is there anyone on council? Councilwoman Bullock?
Move to approve ordinance 1857. Council is seated.
Councilman Moreno?
I will second, and a quick comment if I may.
Sure, go ahead.
It's great to see that we secured funding for this again. I actually received some of the flower seedlings that we passed out last time, the wildflower seedlings, and they're actually just coming through at my house again this year, and they don't require any water, so it's really nice that, you know, we're educating people in the way to, that you can have a nice landscape and still save on your water bill, so it's nice to see that we got that money this time.
Thank you, Councilman McAldowney, did you have anything?
I have to say.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance 1857. Will the city attorney please read the title?
Title of that ordinance reads, "An Ordinance Amending the 2011 Budget of the City of Commerce City, Colorado, by the recognition of the Governor's Energy Office Special Event Grant in the amount of $500 to purchase tree seedlings and printed material promoting effective water usage and the authorization of the expenditure thereof."
Thank you, sir. May I have a roll call vote, please? Ordinance passes seven to zero. Thank you. There is one ordinance on second reading, it is ordinance 1851, an ordinance amending Chapter 7 of the Commerce City Revised Municipal Code. Does council have any further questions or discussion regarding this ordinance? Councilwoman Teeter?
No.
Are you prepared to make a motion? Okay. I'm open for a motion. Councilwoman Teeter?
Excuse me?
Uh huh.
Madam Mayor, Pro Tem, there is somebody that would like to address council on this matter?
Oh, I apologize, would that person please come forward?
Did you write his name on there?
I apologize, sir, welcome.
My name is Nathan Requay. My name is Nathan Requay, and I'm here because of the ordinance amending prohibition for smoking in city parks and outdoor areas and recreational facilities, it just doesn't make sense. We got smoking bans against restaurants, bars, and things of that nature, and if I take my family to the park, I would put out more carbon monoxide and emissions off my barbecue grill, you know, with someone, say, 20 feet away from me than I would by smoking a cigarette or anyone else in the group smoking. It just seems to take away from our freedom. I mean, I am a smoker, my wife don't smoke, a lot of my friends don't smoke, and I can respect that, but it just doesn't make sense not be able to smoke outside. We already got enough restrictions prohibiting us from smoking in the workplaces and everything else, where we have to be secondhand, set off aside citizens, and I think it's just ridiculous to ban smoking outdoors, whether it be in a park, or the sidewalk, or 20 or twenty feet from your neighbor's house, you know? The only other thing I'd have to say is, as described in here, as a live well Colorado community, we have an obligation to do everything we can to encourage health, living, and behaviors. And somehow, that just seems completely wrong to me. I mean, it's trying to dictate and control a person's life. You know, if I get cancer from my smoking, I'm not going to come crying to anybody. That's my own doing. I, I just think that, you know, it comes to a point where it's just, I mean, too much restriction going over, over the barrel. That's all I'll say. Thank you.
Okay, sir, there's a few council people that would like to speak with you, so if you'll stay for just a moment, that would be great. Councilwoman Teeter?
Mr. Gaylor, do I address this to you or to the gentleman? Okay. Sir, I forgot what your name was, but this was brought forward to us by a group of children in the school district, that they were tired of seeing the cigarette butts and all. And it also, it's a deterrent more than anything. It's not going to be like a priority police call with the police chief, but it's to set an example. And it was brought, like I said, brought for these children, thought it was important, and we as council members thought it was important as well, just to let you know.
I can understand that. And I, I think the children bringing it might be maybe the grade school or elementary, junior high, but when I see, like, going up to Lester Arnold's and they all go over to the library to smoke cigarettes and things like that, you know, now, like, for the younger kids, one thing, but, you know, the high school kids, even when I went to school, you know, we had a smoking lounge. I mean, all this stuff has changed, because I'm quite older now, but back in those days, you know, I could buy cigarettes as a child, you know, all that's been outlawed, and I see the progress. I don't push smoking on anyone.
Right. And, and with the high fire danger at this level, that could be a safety issue too, not by smoking, as well, with all the dry weeds and areas and all. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Councilman Bullock?
Mr. Requay, I was wanting to comment on your comment of personal freedoms. You're saying that your personal freedoms are being restricted by you not being able to smoke is restricting other people's personal freedoms by you smoking in the park. You know, when the children, when the kids came in and originally brought this forth to city council, they brought jars of cigarette butts that people left in the park, you know? And what a lot of people don't realize is, no one is a conscientious smoker. During the Army, we had to field strip our cigarettes if we smoked. No one does that anymore. They just drop them where they leave them. And if they feel that this is a pollution, not only visual, but a secondhand pollution to them, I think we should honor their requests also. You know, I think we should look out for the needs of the many before we look out for the needs of the few, but we look out for everyone's needs. And smoking isn't a need, and it isn't a right. You know, it's a privilege. And so we aren't telling you, you can't smoke, you just can't smoke anymore in the parks and all the places that are on this ordinance.
That is what I disagree with. I agreed with the first couple of arguments, but I don't see how your being so many feet away with me, from me, could infect you with my cigarette smoke, you know, when it goes up in the air.
Are you finished, Councilman Bullock? Okay. Councilman McElDowney?
I think the comments that my fellow council members have made, I would simply be echoing at this point. I think, again, it's a matter of a, a community health concern that was brought forward by the children. When we discussed and reflected on their, their testimony and our own experience in, in our public parks, I think we fully agreed that it makes sense to try and protect that, those outdoor spaces for a smoke-free environment. So I, we appreciate you coming forward tonight and sharing your perspective. And, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Moreno?
Nathan, thanks for coming tonight and, and sharing your perspective on this. Nathan actually called me shortly before the, the council meeting, and, and we had his, a conversation about this ordinance, and I thought he brought up good points. So I encouraged him to come tonight and to share that, because, you know, taking a page out of Councilwoman Teeter's books, it, book, it always helps when you have two sides of the argument in order to make an informed decision. You know, we, we decided to support this because, as mentioned before, the kids brought this to us, and huge jars of, of cigarette butts that have been thrown all over the parks and trails. So not only does it serve as a deterrent in terms of health, it also serves as a deterrent for littering, which is, I think, an added benefit. You know, there, and we, we have to keep in mind that these are, these are also taxpayer-funded parks, and we want to make sure that everyone is able to enjoy them. That said, there, there are two exceptions in the ordinance that I think you will appreciate. One is the Buffalo, Buffalo Run, smoking is not prohibited there, as well as on any blacktop parking near the parks. That is also not included in this ordinance. And the reason those two exceptions were made was because we, we recognize the limits of setting law in some places, and we also wanted to make sure that, like, for example, when a parent goes to Pioneer Park and takes their child to, to play baseball or something, and they, they do want to have a cigarette, they can step onto the black asphalt pavement and it'll be okay there. And it won't be as much of, it won't bother people as much. So I just wanted to make you aware of those, those two exceptions.
Yes, I understand that. And I understand the littering, you know, I mean, you shouldn't be throwing your cigarette butts out or anything like that, or throwing them on the ground. That's an issue, and I fully understand that. But in comparison to smoking a cigarette in the park and having your charcoal burquets burning in the grill, which is putting out a thousand times that I can think of off the top of my head, you know, more than that cigarette is, it just doesn't make sense to me in that respect. As far as enforcing littering laws and of that nature, yes, absolutely. You sit there and go like that with your cigarette, yeah, you should get a ticket. You know, it needs to be put in its pop, in proper place.
Thank you. And Councilman Benson? I'm sorry, were you done? Councilman Moreno? Councilman Benson?
Yes, thank you for appearing here tonight. We always appreciate it when citizens come in and express their opinions about things, and that's what these meetings are for, is for people like you to come in and tell us what you think about a particular issue. And I appreciate your taking the trouble to be here tonight. That being said, I agree with everything that the other council members have said about this issue. But thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Councilman Johnson?
Well, sir, just a couple more things. I don't agree with any of them. I agree with you. And I agree with, with our right. I don't smoke, never have. I don't go with girls who smoke. But I, I, I really see an erosion of our personal rights in legislation like this. I think it's not, it's not a very common sense way of handling this situation. I, I see, if we're going to do this, why don't we just outlaw smoking in the neighborhoods? Because kids play in the neighborhood. You know, we're going to outlaw people who smoke. It's a bad habit, just like eating too much, but we're going to outlaw, you know, what's next? And, and I just don't think this is the right approach. I, I really, it really bothers me when government oversteps its authority, and I really believe this is one of the, one of the instances of that happening. I don't think it's any of our business. And I, I appreciate what the kids had to say, and I really think they've made some great, great comments, but I don't think it's our, our, our responsibility to do that. So I agree with you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilman McElDowney?
I'm going to make one more final comment. As a parent, I have a five-and-a-half-year-old daughter, and I can count on, you know, both hands, the number of times where we've been at some public place, some public park. And I don't voluntarily walk through someone's exhalation of a cigarette, but I'm not in control of that. I'm not in control of a public space where someone chooses to smoke and blow their smoke all around. I don't smoke. My family doesn't smoke. We don't go places where there is cigarette smoke. So when we encounter it involuntarily, that's, that's a matter of my personal choice being infringed upon. I think the difference between Mr. Johnson's comparisons between, you know, legislating, overeating, or otherwise, I can think of any number of things that are inappropriate to legislate, simply because they don't have any effect on anybody else other than the individual. Smoking, however, does. Anybody standing near you gets the benefit or the harm of your choice. It's not their choice. Our public parks, as Mr. Moreno mentioned earlier, are taxpayer-funded. I don't think the taxpayers paid to have people throw cigarette butts in the park or on a trail, in the same way that they don't pay to build a trail that someone rides a dirt bike down when it's not a motorized trail. So there are certain things that make sense to put rules in place to help, to Mr. Bullock's point, the, the many rather than the few. Your choice to smoke can be set aside while in that public space. So I appreciate your comments, sir.
Can I say one thing?
Of course, sir.
Okay. I guess I got to bring this up. How far is it going to go? Now, I have here one of these smokeless nicotine delivery devices. Now, it'll look like I'm smoking if I take a puff off it, but it's water vapor. And it's a nicotine deliver, nicotine delivery system. Is that going to be banned then too? To where, you know, these are legal supposedly everywhere, because it's not any noxious fumes or anything. It's just strictly a medical delivery system, but it looks like you're smoking.
It's a great observation.
And it's battery-operated.
I, I think it's a great, great observation to raise, and I appreciate that. I would, once a motion is made, I would be prepared to amend the motion to ensure that we allow the use of those devices as an alternative in place of an actual cigarette in the places defined in this ordinance.
Councilwoman Teeter?
Yes, I would be ready to make a motion with the amendment attached.
Councilman Benson?
Well, I'd like to know what is in. I don't know that what the chemical formulation is of what you're exhaling. I don't know what that is. It's probably not carbon monoxide, but it might have something to do with nicotine. I'm not, if you're getting nicotine out of it, there's probably going to be nicotine in what you're exhaling. So before we amend this, I think that we, maybe we ought to ask the staff to study exactly what it is that you're exhaling when you exhale from one of these devices.
Carbon dioxide and water vapor. It's battery-powered. It heats up the nicotine in the cartridge. When you inhale on it, it heats up the nicotine, and then it, through the chemical process, turns it into water vapor and carbon dioxide.
It eliminates all the nicotine?
There's no carbon monoxide or any harmful chemicals whatsoever.
Is there any nicotine in it when you exhale?
The nicotine is what you inhale. What you blow out is the carbon dioxide and water vapor.
I guess I don't understand how your body can make that distinction and only ingest one part of it, but...
Because your lungs will inhale, or when you inhale...
May I interrupt?
Absolutely.
Without pursuing this discussion, I can tell the council tonight, I'm not prepared to write an amendment that's going to take into account that kind of smoking. I don't know what that's about. I've never heard of that. And we're talking about smoking, a person smoking. So if, if he's smoking a cigarette that doesn't have nicotine, far be it for me to be able to distinguish that without doing some research on it.
That would be what I would request, is that some research should be done on that to figure out exactly what those, what those devices produce.
Okay. Councilman McElDowney?
Just going to suggest that we proceed with the motion without the amendment at this point, and ask staff to come back at a later date based on some additional research, and we can consider an amendment to our, to ordinance should it pass this evening.
Okay, I, I'll change my, I move to approve ordinance eighteen fifty-one.
Okay, before we move forward, it looks like we have another gentleman, Glenn Murray, that wants to speak. And thank you, sir, for coming to come speaking with us. I appreciate it. Glenn, Mr. Murray?
Members of the council, Glenn Murray, 11010 Havana Street, Brighton. I wasn't going to speak on this, but it's got my interest up, and I think common sense here would go a long ways. What each of you in the council said, there's, there's pertinent value in each one of the things you've said, but common sense goes a long ways. At what point do you start to infringe on somebody else's rights? You need to make sure that you have places that are, that are non, not, what should I say, non-accessible or not easily accessible for people to go smoke. Not that they can smoke in front of your kids, that's wrong, but they need to have a place they can do that. And this, this part about the trash, this is what got my, my ire up. Your roads, drive around out my way, there is beer bottles, there is beer cans, there is plastic, there is junk everywhere. So don't tell me a few cigarette butts. I don't like them. I don't smoke, but that's not the issue. The issue is it infringes on somebody else's rights, and you've got to make sure that that works on both sides of the issue. So be cautious on how you pass this.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Mr. Bullock?
I was just prepared to make a motion without the amendment, because I was going to ask that the amendment be dropped, but it's already been done. So, but Ms. Teeter already did it.
But I need a second.
I will second that motion.
Okay.
Can we ask if anybody else has anything to say?
Yes, absolutely. Does anyone else have anything to add to this this evening? Yes? Please come forward. No more? Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. It has been moved and seconded to approve this ordinance. Will the city attorney please read the title?
Title reads, an ordinance amending Chapter Seven of the Commerce City Revised Municipal Code by the addition of Section seven dash one zero one four prohibiting smoking in city parks, trails, open spaces, and recreation facilities with certain exceptions. And I would ask that by an administrative correction, the ordinance provides for an effective date to change the effective date to May one, two thousand eleven, to allow time for this ordinance to be put into place by staff, because as you'll note in the ordinance itself, it provides for April one. So we'll make that administrative correction unless counsel has an objection to that.
Thank you, city attorney. Councilman Moreno?
No objection, just, just a final comment. Nathan, thank you again for coming tonight and sharing your, your view. I found our conver- I found our conversation very interesting, and I'm glad that you came up and you shared your perspective, because I think that's really important. So, thank you.
Okay. May I have a roll call vote, please? Thank you, sir. Ordinance 1851 passes, six yeses, one no. Okay. The next order of business is an ongoing discussion of the city council's recommendations for naming of the Rocky Mountain National Wildlife Refuge Visitor Center. I do have three people signed up to speak. So, city attorney Gaylor, do I just go ahead and start calling, or how would you like this to proceed?
I would say that the discussion should, should proceed with hearing what the public has to say regarding this issue, recognizing that this item has been advertised as a discussion item, and it's not on for action tonight. So, it would not be in order to make any kind of a motion for the council to approve or disapprove anything tonight. Tonight is an information gathering discussion.
Okay. Thank you. Then the first person I will call is Reba Droter.
Good evening once again. Hello. I'm Reba Droter, 7505 East 121st Place in Thornton, 80602. And the first thing that I want to talk to you about is, thank you for allowing me to bring this to your attention. This past week, very surprisingly to me, I heard from more people than I ever dreamed possible, people I didn't even know, knew who I was. And some people that completely disagreed with me the entire time I was on city council contacted me as well. And I want to say that this should be a time of great joy in this city. Great joy. We are coming up to the opening of the new visitor center. And just when it seemed like, I mean, just great happiness, everybody's over there putting everything together, and then comes this discussion, which, for some people that may not have been in our city very long, or were not aware of what's been happening here. This was like a tremendous blow to everyone. And so, I would just like, I would just like to say a few things. From the beginning, when the Rocky Mountain Arsenal was considered anathema to everybody, and, and it was the scourge of the Front Range, and anybody that had to grow up here knows exactly what that means. It was awful. When I, when I went away to college, the first thing they said to me is, "Oh, you poor thing, you grew up in that place." You'd have to have lived through this to understand it, but we have 67 years of people who lived through this. So, when the, it was the citizens of this town, Jean Klein, Larry Ford, and I could give you a list, I could give you a list a thousand people long, that, that started this. And they went to the federal government and said, "No more. No more contamination on this land. It reached outside the fence line. You can't, you may not do this to us anymore." We had a whole string of fine congressional people, long before Pat Schroder, state people that came and, and came to our aid. They heard our cry and they came to our aid. I don't see any of them here asking for their names to be named on this. I don't see Jean Klein here asking, her family asking for that. And the reason is because this refuge belongs to the people of the United States of America. Its name was absolutely synonymous with Commerce City. And now that it's something good, everybody wants a piece of this pie. And in this case, they want a huge piece of this pie. They want the pie. It would be, in my opinion, it would be unthinkable to do such a thing. The cleanup started with the citizens. Every single part of the cleanup and the restoration has been done with citizen groups. Every single part of it. To this very day, they even asked us, "How, how far should the fence, what kind of fence should we have on the inner perimeter around the, the two landfills?" Even that part was a huge discussion with the people. The perimeter trail wouldn't even exist without the people. So, the citizens must continue to be part of this. If you're going, I, I would beg you to put this behind you and move ahead. Do not even let anybody ask this question. It is what it is, and it belongs to the United States, not a one person. But if you're going to continue these discussions, there should be many citizen groups made aware of this. They want to talk. We want this visitor center to be connected totally to the city of Commerce City, to Adams County, not Denver County, not Denver City, and to the congressional district that we live in. We can't even vote for Mrs. DeGette. It belongs here and it needs to stay here. I noticed last week that there were several of you that seemed to not even understand what it is we're talking about. So, I am here on behalf of the United States Fish and Wildlife, this part, to invite you to a very special viewing of the Rocky Mountain Arsenal National Wildlife Visitor Center, Refuge Visitor Center, just along the path that you came in on tonight. Who paid for that drive? People of Commerce City. Who paid for those paths that lead up to it? The people of Commerce City. Who designed them? The staff of Commerce City. To drive along that path and pass through those gates for the very first time as it's opened and come, and if you'd have been with me just yes, even just yesterday, you can see the entire Front Range of the Rocky Mountains as if no other place on the earth. Those, that song, "The Purple Mountain's Majesty." When you go out there, you will see the mountains fading into our south and fading into the north and jetting up right smack dab in the middle of where we live. The most valuable property on the entire Front Range, and in 25 years, I can guarantee you, this will be the most valuable property anywhere on this Front Range. It's April 12 at 9:30. And come and see the history of the Rocky Mountains, the history of the people of the United States written on that wall, those walls of that great center. And I can't think that you would go away thinking anything else.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Serna. Good evening. 14122 East 102nd Place, Commerce City, Colorado, 80022. We speak from the perspective of what Commerce City is up against. The community itself started the process to get the arsenal clean. This community paid the price, one, in its school district, in the negative for all those years that it was there, when they used to say, "Oh, you got rabbits charging at people. You got eagles flying upside down. You got ducks attacking skunks. You got skunks attacking coyotes." What was left after? We have an area right now that we don't want, in a sense sometimes, to bring into the city because of where it's at. That community worked in the arsenal, but yet we don't have the pride to bring it in and be part of Commerce City. And I'm talking about the enclave, our water. We sit on one of the richest places where we can get water underneath us, but we have to clean it up. We had to fight for that. Mrs. DeGette had an opportunity to represent Commerce City at one time. She blew us away. We were just numbers to her, as we will be again. Mr. Promoter seems to want to participate in what's best for this area, in what's best for his congressional district, and he's fighting to keep us there. I was part of being riled up about cleaning the arsenal, but yet we cleaned the arsenal and our schools are still the same. But they took the money away from our district, even though we served it well. Our kids fought and fought and fought the negatism. Everything that we have here, we have got to have our community's names on this, if that's what we want to do. But you have to remember is that we were fighting a war, and it was a time of sacrifice. And you don't ask for names. You keep the place the same way it was as far as names, so that we don't repeat history again. We don't need the type of stuff that happened out there. Four weeks ago, I was around 60th and Quebec, and there's an eagle standing right up, beautiful, okay? We talk about prairie dogs. What do eagles eat? Prairie dogs. We brought in the buffalo. You guys had a lot to do with it. Wow. It's there. You can see them now. They're starting to roam around. The little ones going right behind. Make history, but make history for Commerce City. I know that you are all going to go through the process of how or where, or maybe change the name, or maybe not. But I think that Commerce City deserves every bit that we can get. Denver, you have to remember our history. We created Commerce City because we wanted to stop Denver from taking over. And that's what we have to remember. And I think that all of you have that integrity, that when you get to the nitty gritty, you'll do the right thing. It's just us making sure that you hear us, just like you keep saying, you want our input. And our input says, "We paid," okay? Because of our location, we paid for the right to own the arsenal, not Denver. They never wanted it. They took it because they needed a runway at one time, and then people started complaining as to where they were going to land, if they were going, if they were, if their plane was to crash. That's what brought up some of the conversation about cleaning the arsenal and some of the negatism that was out there. But it was rightfully ours to get cleaned up, because we still have those reservoirs of water that we need to get out of there, because everybody wants it. And as soon as they find a way of cleaning that water, they're going to go after it. And that's our water. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Kristy.
Good evening, Mayor Potem. Counsel, I, my name is Kristy Douglas. I live at 10970 Unity Parkway, Commerce City, Colorado. I had the pleasure of attending the council meeting last week, and I'm here to say that I found the citizens' communication comments presented by Mrs. Reba Droter regarding the potential renaming of the Rocky Mountain Arsenal National Wildlife Refuge Visitor Center most interesting. To even consider naming anything on the once arsenal and now refuge something other than the name presently, excuse me, referenced, I find perplexing. In fact, I thought the subject was so interesting and perplexing that I watched that particular portion of the meeting several times. And in doing so, I felt there were many nuances from the tape that seemed to indicate that there may be more to this than the obviously undoubted efforts of, by Congresswoman DeGette, as it seems she is set on naming anything of value on the past arsenal to a name that somehow includes the name Pat Schroder. Now, I must say that in repeatedly re-watching that particular portion of last week's meeting, I can see that those members, see that those members of council who attended the meeting with Ms. DeGette felt it was their place to open the discussion for very possibility, something that I don't feel should be overlooked or dismissed. In other words, I just don't understand why you just didn't say no and tell Mrs. DeGette that it wasn't a topic open to discussion. I don't get that. I want you to know that I have lived in the Denver metro area for over 30 some years, and throughout the years, the feared, feared, just like Guillermo was talking about, arsenal surely belonged to Commerce City, which by the way, Commerce City was always the brunt of everyone's jokes. The arsenal was ours because no one else would have it. However, it now appears that since the tide has turned and the price of the blood, sweat, and tears have already been paid by the people of Commerce City, this arsenal has now become a treasure simply to be pirated. Let me say that to rename anything on this now coveted property, which was once synonymous with a place whose people have endured both great suffering and ridicule, should be considered a stab directly to the heart of our people. With that, I say to any of you on council who were even open to that discussion, or felt that you had the right or power to have that discussion, slow down and think twice. Remember this. You were elected to represent the people of Commerce City, so I ask that you please humble yourselves in paying respect where it is due. Wiping away the fact that this precious property was stripped from our predecessors for use as an arsenal not only diminishes our history, but robs those who have come before us of their much deserved dignity. And let's not forget the real people who fought hard to turn this piece of our history into a national treasure. They are the people from Commerce City, and they aren't worried about getting their names on anything. Let's not forget who we are and the price some of us have paid to get where we are. Let's not open the door to outsiders, the people who in the past wouldn't even have given us the time of day... the people who in the past wouldn't even have given us the time of day to those of us in Commerce City, to offer them the possibility of taking away what we have worked so hard to attain, our ability to have pride in what is rightfully ours. Let's not have the wool pulled over our eyes again. Let's not be known, let's be known as the city with people who not only have pride, but a backbone.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak?
Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Larry Quintana, and I reside at 77 Eddie Magnolia Street in Commerce City, 80022. I wish to express my desire to have that, have the Rocky Mountain National Wildlife Refuge and all the facilities associated with that, with the Rocky Mountain National Wildlife Refuge remain the same. I grew up across the street from the Rocky Mountain Arsenal during that period of time when, if you look to the west, you saw the refineries. If you look north, you had to deal with the, uh, with the, uh, feedlots. To the south, we had the pig farms. And to the east was the Rocky Mountain Arsenal. And we grew up constantly worried about what might happen out there if there was an accident. But yet, we stuck it out and stayed with this community. A group of citizens moved forward and, after a lot of hard work and a lot of time, they succeeded in getting the Rocky Mountain Arsenal changed over to the Rocky Mountain National Wildlife Refuge Center. I would like, that is, belongs to our community, not only to our community, but it also belongs to our nation. And keeping it as the Rocky Mountain National Wildlife Refuge is far more important to all the people of this country than naming it after one person. I want you, I want to encourage you to, uh, fight for that direction as we, the citizens of Commerce City, want to see it stay that way. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Okay, counsel?
I think I'm just going to open up the council discussion myself, since I don't see anyone on the board yet. Um, it was probably pretty obvious last week that I was not in the meeting with Diana Deget, and I was not aware of what took place in that meeting. And I was quite upset when it came to light that there was some, a possibility, that there were some things going on. And so, um, having grown up myself on 60th Avenue, directly down the street from the arsenal, I know what it was like to be a child in this district and go to compete cheerleading matches with other schools and have them give us a hard time or call us names. And we spent our whole lives defending where we live, knowing that we lived in a good place with good people. And we couldn't understand why everyone around us was always so negative. And, uh, having seen it come along throughout the years to what it is now, I, I feel 100% that it does belong to the people of Commerce City. It, it is, uh, just been such a long history and everything that's been done out there. It certainly doesn't belong to any one person and should not be named after any one person, in my one woman's opinion. And I think it should remain as it is. Councilman Bullock?
Go to Councilwoman Teeter first.
You're on the board right now, sir.
Okay, I'm the only one? You don't want to speak?
No, I mean, there's an order and you're on the board. Are you deferring?
Um, I'm going to defer to Councilwoman Teeter.
Actually, is she, I'm sorry, Kathy. Councilman McAldowney, who's next?
I'm going to, since I wasn't in the DC meeting, so I'm going to actually wait for folks that were present to, to speak, and then I'll come behind with some comments.
Okay, Councilwoman Teeter?
Okay, um, I would like to explain to the audience exactly what happened at that meeting. We that attended the meeting were accused last week of doing shady deals behind closed doors. What had happened was, we went into that meeting with our priorities. The number-one priority project that we all had was an on-ramp at E470. We were in discussion. They don't know where the money is going to, uh, come from, this and that. We were ready to leave, and it was Ms. Deget that brought this to us. Is there some time we could have a meeting to possibly discuss this? I did not know how everybody would feel. I don't know how everyone feels. I, I know how a few of you feel out there. I have lived in Commerce City since I was five years old. I can remember sleeping in my bedroom in the basement with earthquakes from the arsenal. How many of you can remember that? I have put 12 years sitting on the Restoration Advisory Board. I was the one that recruited Ms. Schroeder too, and she did a great job as well. Mr. Bullock, you were on there before I was. If everyone is so adamant about not even going forward with the discussion, then I'll, I will be for that. I do, however, know that Ms., um, Pat Schroder did have something to do in the, um, late eighties and the early nineties. Um, I'm very proud that it belongs to Commerce City now, and I'm up for anybody else's suggestion. Thank you.
Councilman Bullock?
First of all, I want to make a statement that the arsenal does not belong, the Rocky Mountain Refuge does not belong to Commerce City. It belongs to everybody in the United States. It is located in three sides on Commerce City and one side on Denver. Well, partially one side. Partially 56th Avenue and all the northern half of it on Havana Chambers is Denver. When the, in 1989, when Pat Schroder brought forth the amendment to make it a wildlife refuge, now, I don't know how many of you know this. She was our congressional representative in District One. She, we were in District One then. In 1992, when it was signed, we were in District One. So, all of the people that sit up and say she had nothing to do with Commerce City need to take a step back and learn their history. I've got the history right here. Now, if anybody wishes to see it, I can show it to them. She sought bipartisan delegation to get the arsenal to be made into a wildlife refuge. If that hadn't have been done, this 27 square miles out here would have been closed to the public forever. It wasn't made a wildlife refuge except through the effort of her and Wayne Allard. He signed on later to give her bipartisan participation to get the bill passed. Now, you need to, before you start quoting your history, you need to learn your history. Anything you want to know about the arsenal, I've got a book up here that says 27 square miles, and it goes back from prehistoric age all the way up to the present. It will tell you what happened out there. I can tell you right now, one of the people that was instrumental with the arsenal passed away last week, Ernie Maurer. He was a tour guide out there, and his family lived out there for some time. He is no longer with us, but I talked to Ernie. I can tell you about different things that happened out there. Now, we had people last week that were rushing to make a resolution on something they did not know about. The two people that made the resolution and seconded, neither one of them were in the meeting that we had. And I find that offensive, because what they were saying was the same thing that was being said at the podium, that we made some back-room deal. Now, here is the thing that everybody needs to know, and you need to know it right now. We have no control over the name of the arsenal. Congress does. Commerce City does not get to name the arsenal. We can sit in meetings and make our suggestions and tell them what we would like it not to be named, but if we say no to the meetings, they can bypass us and put anything they want on it. And then you're going to be sitting up there wondering how it happened, because a bunch of people said no. Now, we have people from Congressman Perlmutter's office in the audience today, and if you don't believe me, ask them, who names the arsenal? We don't do it, and we have no say-so over it. But we can sure be part of the conversation, unless we have a bunch of people that are going to be so narrow-minded they don't even want to talk to their congressional delegation. I want to talk to my congressional delegation, because I have a lot to say about what I would like to see done out there and names I would like to see put, and a path of distinction I would like to see funded. But if we say no, you know what? Nothing happens. So I say we should open up our minds, get in touch with Congressman Perlmutter and Congresswoman Deget, see when they have time, put our council and citizens that would like to sit down and discuss this issue and discuss it. It seems that we discuss everything else up here, even what food we eat and how much money we spend, but we were really quick last week to make a resolution. Now, if anybody has any objection to anything I'm saying, I would like to hear it now.
I have more councilpeople on the board. Are you finished, Mr. Bullock?
I am finished for now.
Councilman McAldowney?
I appreciate Mr. Bullock's remarks. You know, as, uh, as a Colorado native and somebody who's lived in this town for seven years, one of the greatest lessons I learned out of the gate was about the history of the refuge, previously the arsenal. Having had family that had worked out there for their adult, most of their adult life, um, I had a connection at a distance in that respect. I think the thing that most frustrated me and caused me to raise the amendment that Mr. Bullock referenced last week was the sheer surprise that there was even a suggestion that such a discussion, uh, had, had occurred, or that... Not a discussion had occurred, because I think, to Mr. Bullock's point, absolutely we want to retain an open door with our elected leadership. But I think the concern of, of mine was that how out of a discussion of that nature could something come back through a separate channel that be so, uh, you know, taken, you know, what we're hearing here is very wrong. I wasn't there. I don't know what words were shared. But for folks to, who were privy to those discussions to come away with the sense that they did, given everything that Mr. Bullock has said about the fact that we have, at the end of the day, no ability to say what that building will be called, I think we're all quite consistent on the fact that there were a great number of people who played critical roles at any number of stages in the entire process. So to pick any one person out seems, uh, seems to me quite perplexing. So, um, I, I think more than anything, I just want to make sure that before we have any such discussion, as I said last week, that we, as a council, are united in what that direction or position of Commerce City be when we carry forward a message to our elected officials, not, uh, you know, what a small group thinks. So, again, these are my sentiments based on not having been present and having the little input that I have. I'll, I'll hold any further comment for now.
Councilman Moreno?
I'm going to make similar comments to Councilman Bullock, but I'll be a little bit more delicately. In that meeting, what Congressman Deget asked for was simply a meeting. A meeting with the council, a meeting with Congressman Perlmutter, a meeting with the community to talk about this issue. That is all she requested. She indicated interest, yes, that she wanted to, she was interested in naming the visitor center after Pat Schroder. Obviously, that's the subject of the meeting, but at no point was it ever implied or inferred that the community would not be involved. Never. That was the deal, that we would have a meeting, but the members of the community would be involved, as well as this council, as well as Congressman Perlmutter. Do I want to see the visitor center named after Pat Schroder? Absolutely not. But it's important to remember what Councilman Bullock said. We have no authority in this. We can state a preference. We have zero authority. So if we go into this and we burn those bridges before the discussion even happens, what is going to happen to our position? What is going to happen when this community goes to that meeting? Congressman Deget will be shut down, and she'll be focused on her goal, which is the naming of the Wildlife Refuge Visitor Center. I just don't want to see us bargain away any position of, of bargaining power that we have. If we burn those bridges before we enter even a meeting, just a meeting, then we will no longer have a say in this. And that includes, for me, honestly, a resolution from this council. That's all I have to say.
Councilman Moreno and Councilman Bullock, I mean, just by the words I just heard, Mr. Moreno say, "The Deal", this is exactly what gets me upset. This is what had me upset last week. Mr. Bullock, you can sit there and say, "How, how could we come forward with a resolution? Councilman McAldowney and I want to put a resolution forward that was going to, you know, say what we had to say." I remember who I represent. I represent the people of Commerce City. My interest is in protecting the people of Commerce City. I don't forget where I come from. I'm upset about this, because I hear things like "The Deal", and Mr. Bullock over here carrying on about us wanting to put a resolution forward. We're, I was very passionate about this last week, because I felt I was completely caught off guard. I felt like I didn't understand what had, and I wasn't in that meeting, but I also wasn't told anything about what had gone on in that meeting. And then I have to hear about it after I get home from Ms. Schroder, to come forward and say, "Someone from Washington called her and was talking to her", and I can honestly tell you that there have been multiple citizens that have called me since last week, and they all feel the same way, that this shouldn't be named after anyone. It belongs to the people. And so, I'm very upset, listening to comments about "Deals", and I, I'm sorry, Mr. Benson?
Thank you. I was in the meeting also. We didn't bring up any discussion about the naming of the visitor center or the wildlife refuge for anyone. We did not bring that up. And I can tell you this. If I am in a discussion with any member of our congressional delegation, the two senators and the seven congressional representatives, and they bring up an issue, I am not going to tell them, "No, we're not going to discuss that." Believe me, I'm not going to do that. We need things from our congressional representatives. I'm not going to insult any one of our nine members by saying, "No, we're not going to discuss that issue right now", or "We're never going to discuss that." I would not treat them that way, in that impolite and rude manner. I will not do that. I don't know how anybody could suggest that we're just supposed to say, "Shut up, we're not going to discuss that." In any event, um, I would like to know who it is that has started this and has given somebody the impression that some kind of a deal was made. Does anybody in this audience know who has started this? If somebody got a call from Washington, I'd like to know who they got a call from, because I would like to talk to that person and ask them what they think they are doing. No deals were made. It seems to me like, has anybody ever gotten a list of the people who owned property on the, what was, what became the Rocky Mountain Arsenal? Do we have a way of getting the names of the former landowners out there?
We have them.
All right, because that seems to be, that would be something that we should be spending our time on, because those people should be honored in some way. They gave up their land so that we might be able to fight in World War II. That's what we ought to be spending our time on. If this, if this city does not want to meet with Congresswoman Deget or Mr. Perlmutter or anybody else with regard to this, so that this city can have its input into the naming, then I guess this council can vote that we're not going to do that. We're not going to have a meeting with anybody. If that's what you all want to do, it's up to this council about whether, well, that's one thing that this council does have control over. Are we going to meet with anybody that wants to discuss that issue? I take it that several of you do not want to do that. And as Mr. Bullock and Mr. Moreno have made perfectly clear, we have no authority in the naming of anything out there. It's a federal government matter, and I think that it's going to require the consent of at least our seven congressional representatives. at least our seven congressional representatives, maybe our two U.S. senators in addition to that, all nine. I think it's got to be unanimous if there's going to be something named. That's how something gets named on a federal reservation, not by this city. And how somebody could come in here and, I mean, suggest that we have the right to do that, you're just totally misinformed. I think you all know better, the ones that are claiming that. You're just misinformed. We don't have the right to do anything except make a recommendation. And from what I'm hearing, nobody even wants to participate in that discussion, so I guess we won't have any voice in that discussion if that's what you all want. I'd like to hear from everybody because I didn't grow up here. I've only lived here for seven years, but I'd like to hear what everybody has to say about the history of the Rocky Mountain Arsenal National Wildlife Refuge because I think it would be a great history lesson. And Mr. Bullock, I'd like to, you said if anybody wants to see that history that you have, I'd like to see that myself. That would be very educational for me. But again, if anybody knows who it was that called from Washington to spread this false information, I would like to have their name and phone number so that I might call them and have a little conversation with them. Does anybody in this audience know who might have called somebody? Anybody? Just raise your hand. I don't see any hands. So is somebody just making all this up? It's not based on anything? Any allegation? That's what I thought. It's based on nothing. Thank you.
Councilman Moreno?
That was a poor choice of words on my part. Again, there was no deal. And I think any suggestion that there was is frankly insulting. What the understanding was, Congresswoman Deget made her request that we would have a meeting with her, Representative Pearl Mutter, and the community. The understanding was that the community would be involved. That is all. No deal, nothing.
Councilman Mackel Downey?
In the event that Mr. Benson missed my comments earlier, quite clear on the fact that we don't make the decision on the naming. Thank you for the reminder. I think the point I had last week, and I will reiterate this week, is that for those of us, including the community, that were not present in the meetings in D.C., the agreement to have such a discussion as has been suggested with Ms. Deget and Mr. Pearl Mutter, it would be helpful if the rest of council knew. In as close to immediate return from D.C. as possible, in a summary fashion, these were the key takeaways from the discussion, these were the meetings that we held, these are the meetings that are yet to be, are to be scheduled and follow-up based on discussion in those meetings. That puts us all on the same page as a council. It would help greatly to prevent instances like this where a rumor, a suggestion of something that was discussed comes at us from another angle. I'm not in a position to defend or refute any of the claims. Again, this should be a great and exciting time given the pending opening of the visitor center. I think, that said, the discussion is critical to have with Mr. Pearl Mutter and Ms. Deget and with the community and with Fish and Wildlife and with Department of the Interior, all of those folks who played a critical role in bringing the Refuge to the position that it's at today. I think I'm now back to repeating myself, so I'll stop.
Thank you, Mr. Mackel Downey. I am not suggesting that we be rude to any of our congressional people. We would never do that. We have never done that. We will never do that. That is not what I'm suggesting. But I have to agree with Mr. Mackel Downey. It would have been nice to hear this in some kind of a report or some feedback from council or something, you know, other than, you know, the way it happened. You know, I didn't hear anything. Even when I was in Washington with all of you, I didn't hear anything. And that is why I was really upset, one of the reasons.
Madam Mayor, pretend.
Yes, I have Mr. Benson on the board too, but go ahead, Mr. Flannery.
I defer to Councilmember Benson.
Okay, I'm sorry. Mr. Benson?
A deal to have a meeting keeps being referred to. The discussion was, "Well, if you want to, set up a meeting with your staff and Congressman Pearl Mutter's staff, check with the staff of our city, set up a meeting with all three if that's what you want to do, and then we'll have a meeting and we'll discuss this." That was what was discussed. Nobody made any deals. It was something that was so insignificant, and we did discuss some of this at the dinner that we had, that you were present at.
I was at the other end of the table, Mr. Benson. I could not hear 15 people down what your discussion was.
Well, I don't know. What did you expect us to do? Get you a headset?
Excuse me, Mr. Benson. Let's not be rude with one another. That's a council policy.
You're being rude to me.
No, I am not being rude to you.
You were there at the...
I was at the dinner, sir, but I did not hear your discussion. If I didn't because I was on the other side of the table, then I'm sorry.
Time out. Let's get on the subject again.
It was a very short and insignificant discussion because the whole thing was insignificant. No deals were made.
I, for one, would like to hear what City Manager has to say.
Yes, let's continue on with City Manager Flannery. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Prettem, and members of council. This is obviously a situation that has a lot of emotion attached to it. There's a lot of history here. There's a lot of pain involved with this property. There's a lot of family histories. There's a lot of personal sacrifice that Americans made during World War II and since then. So there's no doubt that anything to do with the Arsenal and Refuge is very sensitive. Specifically, the conversations that occurred in D.C., in my experience, I've been with the city since July of '07, the discussions that occurred in D.C. were no different from the ones that have occurred since I've been here, in March of '08, March of '09, March of '10, and March of '11. For at least three years, these discussions have been going on, and they typically happen at the end of the meeting where both congressmembers, Pearl Mutter and Deget, mention the naming issue. And we typically say, "Yes, let's get together. We'd like to work with your offices." And for some reason or another, neither seemed to come together to have that meeting and discussion. We've always been open. We've always had, "Let's get together." We've even initiated conversations to say, "Let's follow up on the visit that we had." This council went so far as, in March of '09, to put a resolution objecting to the renaming of the Arsenal to, I think it was, it may have been mentioned specifically in the ordinance or the resolution, Pat Schroder. It was pulled before we went to D.C. in 2009 because the conversation then was, "We'll address it when we go there again to have the conversation with the members of Congress." So this is not a new issue. This is an issue that's been going on since I've been here. The fact that the conversation occurred again when we were there with both offices and just a few weeks ago was no surprise, I think, to many of us. The fact that there's an accusation of there's a pay-to-play type situation, that's false, absolutely false. There is no pay-to-play in this equation. This is a discussion that's been going on. I think because of the emotion that's associated with this, there certainly are feelings that of inclusion and not. So I seem to agree with many of the speakers, many of you, because of the emotions surrounding this. I think we proceed with caution, but I think we also need to have those open doors of discussion so that there is some resolution, that we can clearly communicate whether the citizens and you all feel that there should be any naming. We came so close as to almost approving a resolution in March of '09 to say we did not want any naming on there. It was pulled for whatever reason, I have to go back to my notes. But I would just say that there is a lot of gravity around this and that I think discussions like this are important. To address Mr. Mackel Downey's comment about the report, staff is providing a report to you. I've seen a draft of it today. I think this item moved fairly fast. Our goal was to get that to you this month as a follow-up. Given the history on this specific issue, we've never seen anything move that fast to begin with. We've, like I said, we mentioned over and over again over the last three years, "When do you want to have the meeting?" And it's not occurred. So to think that it would happen immediately, we had no expectation of that. I think, given that the center is opening, I think there's a lot of correct statements here that we have an influence. I think our influence on the naming is to what it shouldn't be named, more so than what it should be named. I think congressmembers want to make sure that we're in agreement with whatever they do. So if there's a strong emotion and strong opposition to not have a name, then I think they'll listen to that. And I think there's the political sensitivity between the members. So it's something that is very sensitive all around. So, thank you.
Thank you. I don't see anyone else on the board to speak, so do we want to go ahead and move into the executive session? I'll entertain a motion. You can read it off of your agenda. Councilman Mackel Downey?
Move to an executive session pursuant to CRS 24-6-402, paragraph 4E, "For the purpose of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations concerning an economic development opportunity in Commerce City."
Anyone want a second? Councilman Johnson?
I second.
Okay, it's been moved in secret to go into the executive session. Is there any discussion? May I have a voice vote, please? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those against? The executive session will convene in the council workroom and is anticipated to last about 30 minutes. But before we go, City Attorney Gaylor, where does this discussion go from here? I just, I'm not sure. We've had, you know, everyone speak and everything. Where does it go from here?
Tonight, the council had an opportunity to discuss the next step. You heard from citizens regarding their position. So now the question becomes whether or not you want to, as a council, sit back and wait for a proposal from Mrs. Deget's office as to whether or not there's going to be a meeting or whether or not you want to initiate a request for a meeting. But at any event, the question is whether or not there'll be a meeting, and you've got to decide that at some time. Not tonight, but you need to decide whether or not there'll be a meeting and who is going to initiate the meeting. If you're going to wait for her office or if the city is going to initiate the meeting. And I would suggest perhaps that be discussed at your next meeting because it should be something that should be decided pretty shortly in case a request does come from her office. Staff needs to know how to respond to that request. And then just, prudence tells me, and I'll pass this on from my experience, is that you don't go into a meeting generally with knowing what you're going to decide in the meeting. You hear out, or at least pretend to hear out, what the other side has to say, and then after you hear what they have to say, you take it under advisement and get back to them. That's a common way of handling a delicate situation. So, but we're getting ahead of ourselves by deciding what you're going to say at the meeting. We first have to decide if you're going to have a meeting and who's going to initiate the meeting. And that should be decided, I would suggest, at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you, City Attorney. Then we'll go ahead and go into executive session.
Excuse me, I just had a response to that, if I might.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilman Benson?
Okay. We never gave any indication to Ms. Deget that we were going to initiate any meeting. It was left up to her to get with Congressman Pearl Mutter to arrange that meeting and to include the city if that's what she wanted to do. It's not up to us to initiate this meeting.
Okay, that having been said, then that solves half the issue that I just raised. So the next question is then, if she asks for the meeting, are you going to respond with the meeting to at least hear what is being said and to give your input into that meeting? That's really the thing that needs to be decided by the council then at the next meeting.
Bob, it wasn't just Deget's office.
Excuse me, Mr. Bullock.
It was either Deget or Pearl Mutter's office that could initiate the meeting and get with each other to check schedules. It was either one of the two offices.
Okay, so you'll have to decide that next meeting is, we'll put it on the agenda then for a decision in that regard. So if you're asked, the staff is asked by either office then, whether you're going to accept a meeting or reject the meeting. That's basically what you need to decide.
Okay. Councilman Moreno was actually on the board. Go ahead, Mr. Moreno.
Mayor Prettem, Senator, I was just wondering if I could request a brief three-minute recess before we enter the executive session?
Absolutely. How about five? We'll go about five minutes before the executive session. Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. We will go back on the record for the regular meeting. As I understand it, Mr. Cordero does not have a legislative update tonight, so we will go. Did anyone have any administrative business?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Councilman Bullock?
Last week, Mr. Dave Chambers came in and he put a request forward to council to be grandfathered for fifty dollars for two years, administrative fees for oversized vehicle. I would like to get a consensus from the council to grandfather him for his past service to this community, because I was told, well, if you do it for him, you have to do it for everybody. But everybody hasn't done what Mr. Chambers has done for this community. And I'm going to tell you, he just scratched the surface of a lot of things that he's done for this community, because there's a whole bunch of people in this community that if your car broke down and Dave came by and got you, he never charged you a dime for it. So I'm going to just ask for a consensus from the council seated to waiver those fees, just the fees, yes.
Just the fees?
And it's twenty-five dollars a year, but it's a two-year permit. It's fifty dollars for two years, correct?
As I understood it, I'm sorry, Ms. Teeter. As I understood it from speaking with Mr. Chambers today, and I was actually going to bring this up on my administrative report, he was looking just to be grandfathered in, period.
Well, yeah, but that's what I'm saying.
He doesn't want it to expire in two years. He just wants it to be done. Because he told me he won't be retiring for several years, and so he didn't want to just be grandfathered for two years. He just wanted to be grandfathered in, period, which...
That would take an amendment to the ordinance, because the ordinance spells out the permit, but waiver of the fees could be done administratively. Is he talking about, does he have a permit now?
No. He's never had to have one. He was parked in that same place for years and years and years. He lives not too far from me. He's never had a problem until now.
Well, do we recognize that it is a grandfathered in, then, and we're allowing it? Is that...
I mean, I'm for grandfathering him, period, with no restriction on time.
Good evening, Mayor Protem, Snyder, and members of council. It's my understanding, because it is not a section of the Land Development Code, that it is not possible to be legally non-conforming under this section of the municipal code. To allow that, it would require an amendment to that section of the municipal code. As Mr. Gaylor indicates, waiving the fees is a, is a much simpler matter. I think what's being discussed would require an amendment to the code.
When we say waiver the fees, that's waiver them permanently?
Well, you set the time that you want to, otherwise, he's got to come in and get a permit.
Can't we waive them for 10 years? Which is $50 every two years, that would be, um-
That, that would be, that, that would be prejudging that he's even going to get the permit.
Okay, I mean, okay, but I, what I'm trying to do-
I know what you're trying to do, so what can we do? Uh, Councilwoman Teeter?
I just was going to add that I drove by his property today, and it was nicely tucked towards the back anyway. And he uses that vehicle sometimes in the middle of the night if somebody calls and needs a tow, so he does have to have it right there on his property.
Councilman Mackel Downey?
In the spirit of comments made earlier and consistently by any number of us on council, would this be a situation or an example of a situation where we, rather than rush to make a consensus tonight, would it make sense to have staff come back in a week? We agreed to take no action on this individual in the, for this moment, and come back with a, a set of options for, for council to consider?
Yeah, because here's the thing, he doesn't have a permit now.
Right.
So right now, he's illegal.
Right.
Now, what you can do, and I'll give you the option now, you can waive the fee when he applies for the permit, but that's not to say he's going to get the permit, but, because you can't prejudge it until-
To cross that bridge when we come to it.
But you can waive the fee for him to apply for the permit. Brian, do you agree with what I'm saying here?
That would be the easiest way to proceed. I, I believe that's Mr. Chambers' reluctance to apply is he's not excited about paying the fee.
Okay, I, then I understand what you're saying, waive the fee, and then it goes through the whole process, talking to the neighbors and everything, and if he gets the permit, the fees waived. Is that amendable with the council?
Do you want to run down?
Yeah, why don't we just run down the list? Councilmember Moreno?
I just want to echo Councilman Mackel Downey's comments, and I don't want to preempt the work of staff and give them a chance to work this issue out with Mr. Chambers. I understand he's, he's done a lot for the community, and I really appreciate that. But I do just want to give staff the opportunity to work out a solution with him before it comes from council.
Okay, Mr. Benson?
I would agree with what Mr. Moreno said.
Okay, I am for finding a way to work it out and help him with the permit fee. Councilwoman Teeter?
Same.
Same? Councilman Johnson?
Same.
Councilman Mackel Downey?
Same, but do we need a formal motion from council to waive the fee on the permit and then allow staff to proceed with-
Should he, should he be granted the permit?
Well, I'm, I'm not clear as to, so it's given consensus to. Are you saying you want to have us bring it back totally, or are you saying you're waiving the, the fee now and you want us to bring back the solution for the problem with the permit? Because it's a two-pronged issue here.
Yeah.
I think I have a, I think I can summarize what I think we're saying.
Summarize, Mr. Mackel Downey.
What Mr. Moreno was suggesting was we allow this to move through the permit, permit process and allow staff to shepherd this through the process. Coupled with Mr. Moreno's suggestion, Mr. Bullock was suggesting that we waive the fee that allows, that the, the permit fee itself. So I think the consensus is twofold. We allow the, we, we move to do away with the fee for this individual so that he can get into the permitting process. We let it move through the permit process and see where it comes out the other end. It may be no further concern for us because the neighbors support it, the permit is granted, and, and that's, then it may be a matter of, do we extend the, you know, any sort of upkeep of that, of that permit? I think that's what I heard. Is that what everyone was agreeing to?
I think that's what you heard.
Good, could we have that in a form of motion then, so that we have it for the minutes, clearly?
Move, move that we waive the permit fee and that we allow the process to proceed on its own, staff to report back on ultimate outcome of the permit review.
Councilwoman Teeter?
Second motion?
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? All those against? Okay. Okay, did anyone else have any administrative reports? Or administrative business, I'm sorry.
I think that was just part A.
That was part A?
I can't find-
We'll carry on to part B, please. Yours is, yeah. Councilwoman Teeter has something following you, Mr. Bullock.
Okay, uh, she can go ahead because I'm looking for part B.
Councilwoman Teeter?
Uh, yes, last week I was giving the, the challenge to find different restaurants and all. I contacted every council member and we're in favor of, instead of our $7.50 a night, we're going to compress the four nights into two nights having meals, and that way we can have nicer meals for the same price, and then you're on your own. But we all agreed on the first and the third Mondays of each month. And the list that I have so far that agreed, El Hardin, Buffalo Run, Benson's Barbecue, Gailey Gardens, Stellato's Deli, Chopsticks, and the only one, not in Commerce City, but they're so good as Famous Dave's.
Okay.
Do I have a consensus? Do I need to go forward with this then, since-
Well, we've had so much discussion that let's make a motion so it's clearly a matter of record. And, and you don't have to list the restaurants again, we got those.
That we'll have it just twice a month, the first and the third Monday?
The first and the-
Okay.
And the dollar amount would be the $15?
Close to $15. It's off by a dime.
Okay, we've had a motion and a second. All those in favor, oh, Councilwoman Benson, did you want to comment on it before we vote?
No, I was going to make the motion, but apparently-
Oh, okay, they beat you, sorry. All those in big favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those against? Okay, motion passes. Mr. Bullock?
Okay, my second thing was tickets for the Historical Society dinner, I mean, luncheon on May 1st. Lynn has the tickets up in her office. If you, if you need more than two-
I do.
Or more than one, or whatever, we can get her another book of tickets, but she has enough for each council member right now. But if you need more, just let her know, and she'll be provided with another book of tickets.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have any administrative business? Okay, on to reports. City Attorney Gaylor?
No.
No reports? Um, City Manager Flannery?
Two quick ones.
Okay.
Wanted to mention, staff is having their staff retreat this week, so look forward to coming back with a number of ideas and follow-up from your retreat. And then secondly, I just wanted to mention that, I don't usually say this type of stuff, but I actually had a chance to go out to the grocery and deli on Saturday and enjoyed the interaction with the public. It was really a nice community event, I think, and seeing a lot of familiar faces and getting some free ice cream. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Either of you have anything to add? No? Okay, Councilmember Moreno?
Um, I don't have much to report, just want to thank council for the passionate discussion. Um, you know, we always list council priority, or communication as one of council priorities. I think that kind of gets lost between us on council, though. And I understand the frustration of Councilman Mackel Downey and Mayor Protem Snyder. I think this situation can be avoided in the future, so I'm just putting a plug in there for, for better communication between council members, I think that would help. And then, just to echo City Manager Flannery, I also got to attend the grand opening of Stellato's Grocery and Deli, badly needed in the northern range, and I think he's going to be very successful, so it was nice to see that. That's all.
Thank you. Councilman Benson?
Yes, I was not at the Saturday meeting at Stella, Stellato's, but we ought to announce to everybody that it is open now. It's kind of an Italian deli at 104th and Chambers', and they can use all the business that they can get, so try to, let's try to give it some business. I really don't have, nothing really happened with me last week. I would point out that tomorrow night, Texas A&amp;M and Notre Dame are playing for the Women's National Basketball Championship, so-
We knew it was coming.
We're in basketball season now, and in a couple of weeks, I'll be reporting on Texas A&amp;M baseball. Thank you.
Oh, please. Okay, Councilwoman Teeter?
Yes, I only have two things. I too was at the Stellato's Deli and happened to run into Mr. Dominic over there. And then, when I was making my cabbage rolls for everybody-
Yeah.
-in the morning on Sunday, I didn't have enough cabbage or milk or, and Tracy, I did put onion in there, by the way.
She tells you that after I ate it.
And so, at 8:00 in the morning, I was over there shopping. Secondly, I think I need to bring this to everyone's attention because you never know who's going to be calling from DC, which we found out tonight. At the luncheon that we had at NLC with CML, I was very productive. We had all of our congressional leaders speaking there. And Cory Gardner was coming up with a new savings account business, savings account program that gives you tax cuts and credits and all. And I talked to him, he contacted me, will, will be using my name, my business name up on Capitol Hill promoting this. So if you get a phone call from someone that I'm out there, that's what it's about. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Johnson?
No report.
Thank you. Councilman Mackel Downey?
Real quickly, regarding the opening of Stellato Market, also had the opportunity to go and visit and got the, the behind-the-scenes tour. Really need to see Mr. Stellato and his family make it to this point. You know, I think everyone on council will recall when we approved his incentive some months back. He has literally, I mean, driving by, literally some nights, heading home from council at 10 or 11 o'clock at night. The work lights were still on in that place as they were working to put this thing together. Heard from him that not only did he do a lot of the work himself, he did a lot of the really dirty work by himself, including digging out, entrenching to build, you know, running his plumbing and do his grease trap, et cetera. So absolutely great to see somebody in the community, you know, invest in our community, and I hope everybody takes the opportunity to help invest in his business and give him some support. I'm very excited for his first batch of meatballs and his first batch of lasagna. Sounds like he has some great family recipes, he just has to work on scaling them up to the portions that are suitable to the amazing kitchen that he's got in the back there. So I think they've got a great, a great opportunity, and I just hope everybody's able to, to go pay him a visit on a regular basis, so, thanks.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Bullock?
Um, the seniors left this morning to go to Deadwood, South Dakota on a senior trip. There were about between 30 and 50 of them that were going up on the bus, and it got off to a rocky start because the bus that was supposed to be sent down from South Dakota to pick them up never left. So they were supposed to leave at 9:00, when I was talking to them, it was about quarter till 11:00. They were supposed to, the bus was supposed to be there by 11:00. I will find out tomorrow and report to you next week what time the bus showed up. So, but they were all still in great spirits and ready to go up and give their money away to, to the Bullock Casino up there in Deadwood, South Dakota. I'll be rich.
Are, is that all, Mr. Bullock?
That's it. Short report.
Okay, Mr. Bullock, would you like to let everybody know about the Historical Society's yard sale coming up? Or, you have that information and the date? Or no?
Um, yes, the Historical Society is going to have a yard sale coming up.
Um, I'm, it's May, wow. Jean, when is it? Okay, I will tell you next week. Thank you.
Okay. Yes, I was trying to plug it, so if anyone had any items-
I have six, but I don't have a pound in front of me that actually I can hold this up. Never mind. I do have it, just a minute.
Okay. I was just trying to get a plug in there for them.
The 6th and 7th. Commerce City Historical Society will have a garage sale at their property on Friday the 6th and Saturday the 7th.
So if you have any items for donation, you can see Deborah Bullock and get those donations over so they can have a, we can have a, because I'm a part of that group too, and I think they're wonderful and I love them, so it can be a successful yard sale. So if there be no further business, come before this council, we are adjourned. I'm good.